All right, good morning. Happy Monday. Welcome to Commissioners' Court. 13th of September 2021, our first regular meeting of the month. Let's start it right. If you'll stand, we'll begin with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we ask you today to be with us, Lord, as we make our decisions for the county. And we pray you'll be with our first responders and protect them today and heal our county, Lord, and heal our nation, Lord, from the virus and protect each and every one of us. We thank you for all your blessings, of course, today, Lord. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Once again, September 13, 2021, 9:00 a.m., item number one, public comment time. I do have a request to speak, and I'm sorry, I need new glasses, I can't read the name very well. Who has signed this? Steve Austin Doggone, I should know your signature better than that. Steve, that's all right. Welcome, Steve. Make your way to the podium. How can we listen to you today? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just wanted to give you an update of the flags that we have issued based on our acquisition of funds that were being held by the Titus County. Still in the process, we haven't given them all out, but I want to give you an update of where we had been. Stand does have a plug in the bottom of it for sand or gravel, so it doesn't hurt to weigh it down. Had a total of 14 flags, and thus far 12 of them have been placed. Gave you an update there. Just wanted to thank you all for doing one of them. Everybody seemed appreciative, enjoying them. Beautiful, good paper.
You've got pictures of every single placement, from the Commissioners' courtroom to our district courtroom, library, the extension office, the Justice Center, courtroom B at the annex, Mid-America Flight Museum got one, Prefort Manufacturing in the lobby, the Civic Center has one in the lobby, the municipal courtroom, city council chambers, and at the Chamber of Commerce. You've covered all the bases.
Still have a couple to give out. We'll locate you soon to get those there.
All right. Express our appreciation to all concerned for the decisions they made, and thank you for the legwork you put into this.
That was our pleasure.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the court at this time during public comment? Item number two, we've got a retirement recognition, and some of you may not have even known this, it just seemed like it crept up on us, but this one's worthy of taking some time in recognizing somebody that works for the county for 18 years. October 13 of 2003 to September 3 of 2021, this county was privileged to have a wonderful employee, Alodia Chapa. Alodia is here with us today, senior deputy clerk, and I would like to ask Alodia to come up to the front, and we're going to get a picture here in just a moment, but again, 18 years, I think that that surpasses anybody in this room. Anybody been with the county longer than that? Oh, I apologize. I apologize. I don't think about that. Well, not many of us will even make it that long, much less have we spent that long working for the county. But, and I'm going to come down, but just so you can hear me a little bit better, before we take a picture, this plaque says, "In recognition and appreciation of your 18 years of service, dedication, and significant contributions to the citizens of our community in Titus County, Texas," Alodia Chapa. I'm going to ask all the Commissioners to come down here, and I'd like to get a picture here, because this is, 18 years is a long time with one employer. Who's got a good camera? James, will you take a picture for us? And we've got somebody else here.
[inaudible]
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 All right, y'all ready? One, two, three.
Third. Third.
Don't check to make sure you're happy with those pictures. And make sure your mom's happy.
Oh, my goodness. Mine's different than mine, I guess. All right, one, two, three, there we go. All right.
Alodia, congratulations. Appreciate it. Turn this over to you, and you will display that, and have memories of your years in here. And if you want to drop by and see Alodia, she's at the north end of town. Can I tell them that?
Yes.
She's at Pigeon Page, she'll be happy to assist you with whatever you need. Thank you.
Thank you.
18 years. All right, moving on to the less exciting things. Number three, considering possibly approved minutes from our August 23 special meeting of the Commissioners' Court. We call it special because it was the second meeting of the month, not necessarily a required meeting, but this was two weeks ago at our, actually, three weeks ago, that was our last regular court meeting. So I need a motion, if you all are ready to approve that set of minutes that Joyce prepared for you.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the August 23, 2021 minutes made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parchman. Any questions or comments there? If not, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Another set of minutes from our tax and budget hearing that we held on Thursday, September 2. We have that set of minutes as well.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve the September 2, 2021 minutes.
Second.
Second is made by Commissioner Parker. Any questions, comments about that? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Joyce, thank you for preparing both of those. Item number five, a report from our Commissioners, let us know where they're working on the roads at this point. I'll start with Precinct 1, Commissioner Parchman.
We have been doing lots of mowing. We have started side cutting, been replacing culverts. We have chip sealed County Road 1905, County Road 1695, and 1697 with the help of all other precincts, and we've been helping Precinct 2 and 3 do some chip sealing and get ready to help Precinct 4.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ditt.
Okay, we've been busy with base failures out on 1070, and doing some ditch work on that road too, as we're settling up some of the soft spots on it. And we had several trees down, had one down on 4425, we went and had to cut down. We chip sealed 2300 and 2315, and we also chip sealed 1030 along with Precinct 1 on that. And we went out a couple of days chip sealing the roads in Precinct 1 and Precinct 3, and we've been mowing and side cutting. Work continues.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Apple.
Like I said, we've got County Road 3241, 3243, 3240, 1905, 3 miles of it, 3320 and 3325. We wind up getting our chips sealed. At the time, we may start another one, but we've been side cutting and mowing, and put a few culverts in here and there, and then, like I said, trees are falling, and we're picking them up and trying to stay busy.
All right. Commissioner Parker.
We've been helping the other three precincts chip seal. My part-time guys still been mowing and side cutting, but we've got all of theirs done. Was hoping to start ours tomorrow, but with this rain coming in, I don't know if we're going to be able to start tomorrow or not, but just as soon as we can get through, we've got about somewhere in the neighborhood of 5 to 7 miles that we're going to chip seal. And once we get ours done, then we should be through chip sealing for the year.
You don't see any cold weather messing you up in the next couple of weeks?
I hope not.
Okay.
I hope it gets to the end.
All right, thank you all. Item number six, considering possibly approve a replat of the Guest subdivision number 1. We're reducing the number of lots down from 5 to 3. And I don't know if Kerry Guest, who is here, wants to explain his thoughts here, but let me tell you that this is an existing subdivision that we had previously approved with 5 lots, and for whatever reasons, we've decided to make a change, I say we, the Guest family has decided to make a change here. And obviously, when you go from 5 lots down to 3, that means something gets bigger there, and so that's exactly what's happened. These lots have gotten bigger. We had previously met our minimum requirements. We previously had everything in order. I have spoken with Clint Bain regarding this, and we do not need to go through the full subdivision process here, as we are simply changing the lines and again, going from 5 lots down to 3 lots. He says everything that was, that caused this to be approved the last time is still in effect. And Kerry, is there anything you need to tell us about this, or that you want to tell us about this?
No, sir. It was just here, just in case you have any questions. It's just being approved.
We have all of his appropriate paperwork here. We've got now a 1.05 acre lot, and a 1.03, and then a large 3.16. Are those two smaller lots basically the same design as before, or did they change a little bit?
No, sir. They changed just a little bit. I made it where they were more rectangle, but they were before, just kind of spaghetti in there, meeting criteria. But I changed it all up, because me and my boss were going to sell it, and I didn't want to leave it like it was, it was just a mess. And so I changed it to where it's just nice and more sustainable with revenue.
And you have road frontage is available on all of these. We've got a longer driveway to get to the third lot. The first two lots are there on County Road 1535, is that right?
Yes.
And then we have a bit of a longer driveway to get back to the rear lot, but all three, we don't have any need here for a county spec road in order to meet these requirements. And then there's a nice pond on that 3.16 acres. So Kerry's got all of his paperwork here, and based on just the nature of what we're doing here, as well as Clint Bain's blessings on this, I'm going to recommend that you all give this favorable consideration.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the replat of the Guest subdivision number 1, reducing the number of lots from 5 down to 3, is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. Any questions here on this? All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Oh, all in favor? To make it official.
Aye.
Aye in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And there you have a unanimous vote. All right. Thanks for getting me this.
Thank you very much.
Item number 7, I just want to mention this, it sounds like we're going to table this, but item number 7, just to introduce this to you, is to consider and possibly approve the Woodlake Park subdivision in Precinct 2. Sounds like everything is in order. We do need to get the septic system or the sewage plan looked at and approved by Clint Bain. Didn't quite get that done, so I may have gotten this on here prematurely. But Christine Baller, one of our local realtors and a good friend of mine, is here today, and she is representing Mr. Richard Graham, is the individual who owns this property, and my understanding Commissioner Fitch knows him and is aware of this. Christine, in case you are not able to come to the next meeting, when we most likely will approve this, is there anything that you would like to tell us about this subdivision, and where it is, and what's going on here?
Yes, I can just say that this is County Road 2910 in Titus County. It's going to be a subdivision with, I believe, 11 total lots. There's already three houses out there that was built before it was formed, and so now we're just trying to form this up and make this an official subdivision with a nice lake, a little pond out there. So it has County Road frontage on both sides, so we're good on entrance and exits there. So we're just trying to meet the minimum and put all, everything in place.
What's the total acreage for the subdivision?
I don't know. It was 33 acres to start with, and he's not doing like half of it, so probably about 10 acres probably is what he's cutting off on that, hits the two County Road sides.
Well, if we've got 11 acres, hopefully we've got at least 11 acres in order to meet the 1 acre requirements.
Probably 11.
Is any of this lakefront property, or it's pond, pondfront property?
Pond, lake, big, a lake pond, yes. There's five or six that are on the water, that touch the water's edge.
Okay.
Two homes are already in place, and then other, I think, five other lots, or six, four other lots that touch the water.
The homes that are in place are going to become lots that are included in this subdivision, as well as the other eight, or however many there are?
Yes, yes. On one side of the pond, we don't have an HOA yet. It might not be HOA all the way around, maybe just one portion of it, that's later in the day, if they want to form an HOA.
Okay.
But yes, it is all in that.
And you mentioned road frontage. Is there any kind of a county road that's got to be built to make this a suitable subdivision?
No, it's great up there. It just curves around, ends up in Franklin County on the edge, down the road, way down the road.
So every lot has already got frontage on a road in order to get to that?
Not every lot, no. It would be, there's a private road, but their address would be out on the county road. But there's three or four lots that's in the cul-de-sac, but that's not, that's made this county road.
Okay. Is that a newly created cul-de-sac?
No, that's been in place for a good many years. I don't remember the first half of it, 2014 or something like that.
So is this a grandfathered-in situation? Are you familiar enough?
Kind of, sort of. They're kind of weird shape, but there's still plenty of room out there. Just changing the boundaries a little bit. And then, a couple of those lots actually go out, you could come out on 21 if you wanted to, on FM 21, on that.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah, on that one side, so, yeah. It's easy access, just clearing everything up, resurveying.
Do you see that there's any need for a road that's got to be built to county specs and bonded and all of that?
No.
Okay. So that's not going to be an issue?
It's just private, just private road, yeah.
And you had your sewage plan developed by George Sanford, is that what you told me?
Yes, years ago, we drew up a plan, a plaque, a drawing, and that's what we're working from.
Okay.
So we'll just get that confirmed, now that we have the plaque in place, we'll present that and get that confirmed, that yes, this is intended. And there was, I think, enlarged a little bit, a couple of lots, enlarged a little bit over on the backside to allow more acreage. There's a 3 acre lot, and another 2 and 1/2 acre lot, and then the others are like an acre and a half down the way.
But everything achieves the approximately 1 acre minimum?
Oh, yeah. There's just one that's barely, that's 0.97, we're going to talk about that.
Yeah, I think you mentioned that.
But the others are, you know, 1.5 at least usable and more.
Okay, very good. Any questions? We'll talk more about this at the next meeting. So I think, until we get sign off by Clint Bain, let's table this one, please.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Make a motion to table.
Motion to table is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fitch. Any questions, comments? All in favor of tabling item number 7 till next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Christine. Item number 8, we briefly hit on this three weeks ago, and we were talking about the fact that we have some specific pieces of equipment that have been determined, they need to be sold or thrown away. I don't think anything we're talking about here is going to be thrown away, but we do have some surplus equipment. Have we identified any specific pieces that you would like to get approved for sale?
We, did, do you know if Jeff ever got it up here? I meant to ask him this morning when I went by there, and I forgot if they had a copy of the list, but they had the list worked up, and it had everything set up to do it.
Well, we can't approve it for sale if we don't know what it is.
I have, I have this.
Do you have the list?
Well, I don't know, it's got, it's got 30 items. It says auctioneerexpress.com selling for Titus County, Texas. Starts with the SHA for Shaft, HML 31 Rubber Tire Excavator, and then it's got, goes down to the last, number 30 is boxes, wiring, spotlights, front bumper pushbars.
Will you let Jimmy look at that and see if that looks like, in fact, we'll let all these guys look at it, because if it...
It's a great hour, because we were looking for a tower.
Yeah. Yeah.
Y'all want to take a look at this, because I am going to read off all of these.
We have all got, got something in it, and also, you don't, those other three have got stuff in it, and the Sheriff's Department has got several of their old vehicles, old chargers, a van, I think.
All right, well then let me run down this. As far as you all know, there's nothing you've changed your mind on. If there is, let me know, so let's specifically only approve whatever we want to absolutely sell. And it doesn't look like there's 30 items necessarily, I'm going to count exactly, but let me read these off. Item 1 is a rubber tire excavator. Item 2 is a New Holland 4x4 tractor. Item 3 is another New Holland 4x4 tractor, that does have a different serial number. Next item is a Caterpillar 910 articulating rubber tire loader. Next is a Ford tractor. Next is a Diamond C trailer, gooseneck type. Next is an unbranded gooseneck trailer. Next is a Norris trailer, I guess that refers to Wayne Norris built that, maybe back in the day. Next item is a Pentel hitch trailer. Next is a Rhino 72-inch PTO-driven 3-point rotary mower. Next is a Toughline 3-point dirt disc. Next is a two-blade dirt plow. Then a Ford E350 van. Whose van is that?
Sheriff's.
Sheriff, okay. Then we have a string of Dodge chargers. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 Dodge chargers, each with obviously a different VIN number that is provided here. Then lastly, a Nissan Maxima. And who's, do we own a Nissan Maxima? The county owns a Maxima, okay. Lastly, is a lot of consoles, overhead light bars, light controller boxes, sirens, siren control boxes, wiring, spotlights, front bumper pushbars. So it looks like, do you know anything about, is this just a variety of things that no longer fit because we're doing away with the chargers? Is that kind of what's going on here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're getting out of the Dodge Charger business, we've used these up pretty well, it's time to sell them. The equipment that I've mentioned here was unique to these Dodge chargers, and we don't have a use for them, they can't be reused, we've gotten good use out of that. So I'm going to count that lot of items related to the equipment that would go on a patrol vehicle is one lot, and so now I'm going to go back and count the total number. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21. 22 separate lots, seven of which were Dodge chargers, one of which was a Nissan vehicle. The rest of these items look like miscellaneous items that were within each of our precincts. And we are listing these out, and I'm assuming one of you here is, more than one of you, I'm assuming a majority of you is going to agree that these items need to be disposed of, and selling them at auction would be the appropriate way, and this particular list says auctioneerexpress.com selling for Titus County, Texas. So, first step would be to state this in two parts. We're going to approve these items as surplus, salvage, and up for sale, is how this item reads. Again, to consider and possibly determine certain equipment to be surplus or salvage and approve them for sale. Make a motion. Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to designate these lots as surplus, salvage, and to approve them for sale by, will all this be funneled through Auctioneer Express?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay.
Second.
And a second is made by Commissioner Parchman. Is there any question, discussion, clarification? Barbara, thanks for having that list. All in favor of the designation of surplus or salvage and the accompanying sales, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Barbara, I'll have this list here for you. Okay, item number 9, considering possibly approve renewal of our Texas Association of Counties' medical, dental, and vision insurance for 2022. Just want to remind you what an in-depth process that was when we were on the previous type of insurance, when we were self-funded, and we had to involve the work of an advisor, which was CAPS Insurance, and later became Higgins-Botham. We had multiple carriers that were bidding on this, that we would get guidance from CAPS, Higgins-Botham, and we would listen to annual updates and see how our fund was doing. So what we would do at that time, we would have put money, as best we could determine, into a pot, and out of that big pot, we would pay medical claims, and dental claims, and vision claims. And we, a couple of years ago, has it been two years now, or three years? We went to Texas Association of Counties, and we would call that just standard health insurance. It is still a pool, but it is a pool managed by Texas Association of Counties, and we still can have some input on how much the cost of our insurance goes up by how many claims we have. So in other words, the entire state of Texas, those counties that are participating through TAC, don't necessarily get the same annual reevaluation on their rate. And although, the bad news is, our rates are going up... And although the bad news is our rates are going up, the good news is we are well below the average. So let me give you a little bit more detail and I have provided the commissioners with these facts and figures here for their previous consideration. This is coming from the Health Benefit Services Department. The Titus County's Employee Benefit Plan Renewal Information for the year 2022 is attached. This renews January 1. It's not on the same fiscal year as we are. Please review these documents carefully. Your responses due back no later than October 1. If you have questions about your renewal or want to schedule a meeting, contact Mr. Collender at TAC. While the average increase in across the state, county insurance who are with TAC went up somewhere around a little over 7%, our percentage rate increase is 4.7%. And as we all know, rates continually go up. We were seeing that with our self-funded plan and we are going to continue to see that from time to time with TAC. 4.7, not too bad when we are compared to the rest of the averages. Let me tell you how that's going to affect our employees and our budget. Employee only, this is the medical insurance. Previously, we would pay into TAC $925. Effective rate to cover employee only will go from 925 to 968. Employee plus children, and again, the children are not paid for by the county, so there will be some increase here to our employees. If someone chose to be covered themselves and cover their children, that previously cost the county as a pay in to TAC $1,100 even, that goes to 1152, $1,152. Employee plus spouse only, $1,137 goes to $1,190. So about a $53 increase there. And then if you chose to cover it all, employee plus family, previously $1,225 goes to $1,282. Almost $60 increase there. Dental, 3.8% increase. Employee only, $22.38 goes up to 23.24. Employee and children, $61 goes to $63. Employee plus spouse goes from about $45 to 46 and a half. Employee plus family, 83.32 up to 86.50. That's again, an overall 3.8% increase. And then our vision benefits, no changes to the rates for our vision. Just to review those, employee only, $6.20. Employee plus children, 12.44. Employee plus spouse, 11.8. And employee plus family, $18.28. I do want to mention here a change that is going to be in effect, and Barbara, help me be sure I state this correctly. And is this the first time that this has been a requirement when we have a eligible spouse who is employed by a company that provides insurance? Previously, we have not had this requirement, but now we do. Their employer insurance will be the primary coverage. The Titus County spouse insurance will be the secondary coverage.
That's correct.
And what is the realistic impact? Do we know of what that change will be? What would be a case where our insurance would, would kick in and pay? Does that mean that that employee's spouse is going to have essentially just as good a coverage? How does that work?
The employee spouse in that event will have coverage with their employer, primary coverage. And then if they choose to take the coverage with the county, they'll also have secondary insurance. So theoretically, they should be covered 100% for whatever medical costs they may have. That will depend upon deductibles and all those sort of things. We were not required.
Realistically, the negative aspect is if they are currently employed by someone who, for whatever reason, may not pay all or some of their coverage, they are going to have to pay some or all of that premium with their existing employer.
If, if they took the insurance when we had open enrollment, when we went to TAC, they did not require us to follow that ruling. But now with this renewal at the second year, or a little more than two years.
Okay.
They're going to have to do it now.
So that can be a significant impact to somebody whose spouse works for an employer who has to pay more for their insurance than we have to pay here. So that is, that is a change here. And we had talked about that in years past, about doing that with our particular plan back when that was optional and we opted not to do that. That decision has been made for us this year by TAC and they're saying this is the way that it's going to be. So that is important news and that will probably negatively impact some of our employees that are paying for spousal coverage. In addition to all this, and I'm not going to go through all these numbers, we have all the amounts paid in for our insurance, the amounts that were paid out by the TAC plan. But again, overall, no impact to vision, 3.8% impact to our dental coverage and a 4.7% impact to our basic medical insurance. And there again, we continue to pay 100% of the employees' costs there. Was there anything, commissioners, that you found that you want more clarification on or want to discuss further before we consider approving this renewal? Again, we don't have to do it today, but it has to be done by October 30th. All right, let me just read one more bit of information here. This is coming from Quincy Quinlan, the Director of Health and Benefit Services. We recognize that 2020 was a difficult year for many people and organizations and the pool was no exception. You can imagine what happened to insurance over the past year of COVID and it wasn't positive. For over a decade, the pool renewal has been below the national average for health plan rate increases. This year, due to a surge in high cost claimants as well as claims related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the pool renewal average of 7.3% is at or slightly below the projected national combined medical and prescription trend of 7.3 to 8.1. So again, to keep it in perspective, nationally, the trend is somewhere between a 7.3 and 8.1 increase. The average Texas Association of County plan increase across all counties is 7.3 and ours was 4.7. Renewal rates are set annually using a comprehensive actuarial process that determines the amount needed by the pool to fund claims and operating costs for the coming year. We then evaluate each individual county or district based on a combination of the group's size, claim experience, age, geographic area. And based on this analysis, your group's renewal rate may be above or below the pool average. Your renewal rates for Plan 2022 are enclosed along with your TAC Employee Benefits and Wellness Consultants' contact information. We appreciate your partnership with the pool. We want to continue helping Titus County offer this important benefit. Again, we thank you for your membership in the pool and look forward to working with you during the upcoming year.
Judge Lee, may I add something, please?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I just want to call to everyone's attention that when we were self-funded, the county put $1,000 per month for employee coverage. That's what we budgeted. When we went to TAC, the rate was $925 and now it's going up to $968.48. So it is an increase from last year, but it's still under the amount that the county was putting into the self-funded plan.
And even though we were putting $1,000 per employee in there, that didn't necessarily cover all of our claims in the past. There were a couple of years there where we had to dip in more because that $1,000 we had accrued for each employee did not cut it. So it's not like we're bumping up on the highest we've ever been before. We have in effect been paying considerably more than $1,000 there in, in those recent years. So yes, good point there. We did have a nice, or a slight decrease from $1,000 down to 925. Now we're up at 968, but we still have a very nice plan and it's still running cheaper than our self-funded plan was. Anything else, Barbara?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, commissioners, are you ready to make this move?
Make a motion. We approve it, renew.
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to approve Medical Dental and Vision Insurance through the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Pool for the calendar year 2022. I have a second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any discussion? This is the time for it. All right, I will call the question. All in favor of approving the Health Dental, or excuse me, Medical Dental and Vision Insurance with TAC for 2022, say aye. I should have done, I want to read up on, give this information one more time. One employee benefit policy that TAC follows is that dependent spouses who are eligible for coverage through their employer must first enroll in their employer-sponsored plan in order to be eligible to enroll in the TAC coverage. The spouse's employer plan will then be the primary and TAC plan will be secondary. With our open enrollment last year, our TAC representative did not require that we follow this policy. Again, that was in our first year. We do have some dependent spouses who are on the county coverage instead of their own employer's coverage. Effective with this new policy year of January 1, 2022, all employees who would like to insure their spouse will need to fill out a spouse eligibility verification form. Of course, the purpose of that is to determine who's got some kind of existing coverage. Spouses who are eligible for employer-sponsored group health coverage at their employer must first enroll in their employer-sponsored plan and provide proof of coverage in order to be eligible to enroll in TAC coverage as a dependent. In most cases, this should only impact new hires. What does that mean?
People who already, if your spouse is already on the insurance, TAC is not going to go back and require new forms. They're going to make it effective moving forward.
Then I misunderstood. I misunderstood and I'm glad you're clarifying this.
Yes, they're going to make it effective moving forward.
Everybody understand that?
Everybody's grandfathered in.
Because I've been a little bit bummed about this. And so this is going to affect primarily new hires here.
Or someone with the insurance change, if they have some change in employment or something like that. But TAC is not going to require that form for anyone who already has.
Who's already included in our plan.
That's correct.
Glad you said that. Okay, let me, let me put all this back together. Christine, it gets really exciting after this.
Bye-bye.
I'm not sure this is big news here, but I went ahead and threw it in here because Commissioner Fitch did take the time to attend a, a meeting that had to do with the National Opioid Litigation Settlement. And just as a little bit of background there, over the last three years or so, there has been a class action suit filed against the manufacturers of opioids. Here we're talking about the OxyContin and what do they call that stuff? All of the hard, serious painkillers that have caused problems throughout, not only the world, but throughout this, this county. And folks getting hooked on these opioids there arose from the legal community, the feeling that there was a need to pursue action against these creators of these drugs and those that marketed these drugs. For a variety of reasons, they decided to sue them. And we engaged services back, what year was that, James? Was it 18 or 19 when we dug all that stuff up? Do you remember?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. In 2017, we teamed up with some other counties under the direction of a law firm out of Tyler to represent Titus County. This was not something that we can do on their, on our own. We are part of a class action suit. However, Commissioner Fitch attended a meeting the other day with the State Attorney General's Office personnel. He and County Attorney John Coburn attended that. And this was different from our, our lawsuit that we are engaged in with the Tyler firm. So I don't know what you want to add to that, but kind of tell us what, where we are.
The Attorney General's Office came down here and came and spoke with possibly, we're in an East Texas area of counties that they were representing, probably 16 counties in the East Texas area. And so since we're already being represented by Martin and Walker, it doesn't pertain to us. Ken Paxton has sued these companies and he's gotten 1.5 million for the whole state of Texas. It's going to be divided up if you apply online and, but this opts us out since we're being represented by this law firm. And they were giving me a good report that ours is going to be going to court sometime this year. Bear County and Dallas County is going to be first. They're fixing to start any, any day now on a lawsuit. And our attorney fees are not included in our settlement. They're, they're suing separately for their attorney fees, so we won't be out any fees. And they say we should get a considerable amount of money more than the Attorney General if we opted into that. So we're going to just sit back and stay with this Martin and Walker lawsuit, so that's all I have say on that. Sounded, sounded good and they're doing a good job.
We don't know where all this is heading. Maybe they have a better idea of what the overall final settlement is going to be, but I think they're a long way from settling this and a long way from getting through any appeals that may come as a result of this. Who knows? This stuff takes a long time, but we feel like we're with the right firm. Martin and Walker out of Tyler and they say possibly a settlement this year. Who knows? Maybe these drug companies will settle. It's doubtful that this thing will go to, will go to trial, but if there's any benefits to be derived, we stand to benefit as well, but we are not participating with the, with the Attorney General. So thank you and John Mark for going to that meeting. Item number 11, we're going to consider here the purchase of a 2012 Dynapack double drum roller at a cost of $49,959.36 by Precinct 3 and Precinct 4. Now I need to tell you a little bit about this. We've got a letter here from George Bane Company and George Bane is out of Tyler. We do a lot of business with them. Back in August, he quoted to Commissioner Parker this 2012 Dynapack double drum roller that we have been renting. And the original cost of that, that was a new piece of equipment, right? No, it was, no, of course not. No, of course not, 2012. $65,000 was the price of that. He is reducing that price by the amount of rent that we have paid in to yield a net purchase price, not counting the rentals that we have paid of $49,959. Now, with Barbara's guidance on this, I think we have determined that it is probably, not probably, that it is appropriate and it is the safe course of action for us to bid out a piece of equipment like this. And this is a pretty specialized piece of equipment. Who knows if there's anybody else out there, but in order to meet the requirements of the law, Barbara is recommending that we at least seek any other bids that might be out there for a comparable piece of equipment. That's the general statement. Do you care to elaborate upon that a little bit?
I can. I called Texas Association of Counties, their legal department. The reason I called is because there are two, really, there's two purchases here. There's the rental, which we were not required to bid because it was well under $50,000. Jimmy had planned to do it four to five months, so we did not have to go to the newspaper and advertise. And now there's the purchase. So the direction that I got from TAC was that you have to bid one or the other because the cost of the value there is $65,000, the original value. Had we not rented it, we would have had to pay $65,000 and we would have bid it then. And we did not go out for a lease purchase agreement when we did the original rental. So that's the reason why we have to do that. I wasn't sure what needed to be done, but I called TAC. They also directed me to get with our county attorney. I did that. John Mark Coburn agrees that that is the best course of action to make sure that we meet those purchasing requirements. So with your permission, and if you'll table this today, I'll get it in the local newspaper for the two weeks we have to put it in there, and then we can move forward after that.
I have heard of other counties in similar situations where they did not agree with this particular course of action. I think it's the right thing to do. We don't want to do anything that could be potentially questioned, and it's not going to cost us that much more time. We're having to, during the time that we're going to be going out for bid, we're in the midst of a rental period anyway, and so we're obligated through, is it the end of the calendar month, or is it even into October?
It's the seventh. Is it the seventh of the month?
Seventh or the ninth.
It's around in there.
Of October or of September?
Yes, of October.
Okay. So we've got at least one more meeting, and Barbara will then post at least requests for bids on this comparable piece of equipment. Again, a pretty specialized piece of equipment, and see if there's anybody else that might have something out there that would cause us to go, hmm, that's a better deal than this $49,000 that Bain has suggested here as the net price after applying five months of rentals. So today, I am recommending that you don't make the decision to buy this until we've had a chance to see if there's anybody else that wants to participate in a bid process and maybe come up with something better. Any questions or clarification or comments on this?
Table it in. That would be the best.
You can express your intention, but I think we table this for another meeting to give us time to seek bids since the value of this was originally $65,000.
Make a motion.
Motion is made to table the consideration of the purchase of this double drum roller, pending acquisition of additional bids.
Second.
Who made their first motion? Commissioner Applewhite and I think Fitch made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Barbara, thanks for watching over us on that. Item number 12, this is an annual requirement that we have, and we're going to do it now. This is not an action item. This is not something that we approve or disapprove or question or challenge, but we simply put into our agenda and we make sure that it is recorded into the court minutes for this particular meeting, the decision by our district judges on court reporters' auditor's office salaries, get them properly recorded in the minutes. Let me just run down these for you. These are salaries that are determined by the 276 Judicial District Court, by our two judges. We have, first item, the official court reporter of the 276 Judicial District, Linda Carroll. She's one of the court reporters there, is presently drawing a salary of $67,672. Whereas due to inflation, cost of living, and in order to confirm her salary, it is deemed necessary and appropriate that the salary should be increased by $112.78 a month or $1,353.36 per year, making a total salary of $69,025 per year. That's divided out between Camp County, Marion, Morris, and Titus. Of that $5,752 per month, not quite half of that is our responsibility, $2,530.92. We have our second court reporter for the 76th District, Krista LaFavor, presently drawing $67,671. Make the same increase here of $112.78 a month. Here's how it breaks down for Titus County. That's a grand total of $5,752 per month. Of that, Titus County, along with Morris and Camp, Titus' share is $3,048.61. Component number three here by the district court says it is hereby ordered that effective October 1, the salary of the auditor of Titus County is hereby fixed at $62,500. We have next component, the salary of the first assistant of the auditor is fixed at $48,698 per year. The next component is the second assistant auditor. The salary is fixed at $41,906. And then the last component, for a full-time salary, of the third assistant auditor is fixed at $33,165. The final component is a position that will begin sometime this year, is a part-time assistant auditor. And that part-time salary is going to result in an annual expense of $18,096. So it is my recommendation that we, and again, this doesn't need a motion, but we are simply turning this over to the clerk's office to record all of these salaries and make it public record as part of this agenda's minutes. So that included two court reporters that both work for the 276th and 76th District Courts. Then they are also responsible for setting our auditor's department salaries, auditor in 1, 2, 3, in that order, assistant auditors, and then a part-time position. All right. Any questions, comments on that, clarification? Again, you understand, we don't say yea or nay on these. That is simply determined by the district judges, and we record it here. Okay, we've got item 13, consider and possibly approve a revised military leave policy to include House Bill 1589. I want to read this entire thing, just so you understand. I don't think there's anything controversial here or that any of us would disagree with, but all Titus employees who are members of the National Guard or active reserve components of the U.S. Armed Forces shall be allowed up to 15 days off per federal fiscal year with pay for active duty or to attend active or inactive authorized training. The 15 days paid military leave shall apply to the federal fiscal year, and any unused balance at the end of the year shall not be carried forward until the next federal fiscal year. Pay for attendance at reserve or National Guard training sessions shall be authorized only for periods which fall within the employee's normal work schedule. Any employee may use vacation leave. An employee may use vacation leave, earned comp time, or leave without pay if they must attend reserve or National Guard training sessions in excess of the 15-day minimum. Any Titus County employee who's a member of the Texas Military Forces, reserve components of the Armed Forces, or a member of the state or federally-approved urban search and rescue team called to state active duty by the governor, is entitled to up to seven days of paid disaster. This is in addition to the paid leave provided for authorized training or duty otherwise authorized or ordered. An employee going on military leave shall provide their supervisor with a set of orders within two business days after receiving them. County employees who leave their positions because of being called to active military service or who voluntarily enter the Armed Forces of the U.S. shall be eligible for reemployment in accordance with state and federal laws, in effect at the time of their release from duty. Is there any significant change that occurred in this, Barbara, over what it was previously?
I don't believe so.
I'm just not sure we've ever talked about that. We may have when John Mark was away for a considerable amount of time, but this is what he's in. This is, anybody that works for the county here, this is what they would be entitled So that would, I would ask for your approval on that, just to acknowledge that we have read that, we agree with that, and that we will abide by federal guidelines in that House Bill 1589.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite. Who was that? And second by Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye. Item number 14, it's that time of the year when we approve the 2021, or we approve the annual Titus County investment policy. Not that there's a change every year. There is a slight modification this year, but we do have an investment policy. And we've talked about this in the past, and again, we have to approve it. But the investment policy are the decisions that we make as a Commissioner's Court that determines how we invest the liquid funds of the county when they are not being required, you know, to be spent. And Barbara monitors these balances, and at certain times of the year, we have obviously more monies available, and we want to put those to work, earning interest in a safe manner as best we can and as efficiently as we can, and getting the best return that we possibly can. And you'll remember that a couple of meetings ago, we approved a decision and specified specific individuals within the county to allow us to use the pool, what is that called?
Tax pool.
Tax pool. And this gives us some flexibility and another source of investment opportunity beyond what we have just with our local Guaranty Bank. Not necessarily because it's a better rate of interest, but we may at certain times exceed the amount of money that we have on hand, especially when we're getting, I'll call them COVID funds, ARP funds. We may exceed what Guaranty Bank can guarantee is secure for us, and so therefore we opened up another opportunity to use the tax pool. But again, just generally, I want to run down the investment policy. This policy serves to satisfy statutory requirements of Local Government Code 116 and Government Code Chapter 2256 to define and adopt a formal investment policy. The investment policy applies to all financial assets and funds of Titus County at the present time and any funds to be created in the future. The county's investment officer, under the direction of the Commissioner's Court, may invest county funds that are not immediately required to pay obligations of the county. The court shall designate by resolution one or more officers or employees to serve as that investment officer and may designate a committee. The objectives that we have in general are that the funds of the county will be invested in accordance with federal and state law and this investment policy. The county will invest according to the strategies for each fund as they are adopted by the Commissioner's Courts. Some of the highlights that we want to achieve, safety, liquidity, diversification, yield, maturity. We don't want to lock into a five-year CD with monies that are going to be needed in one year. So obviously, there are certain periods of time we may invest in fixed amount of time, but we certainly don't want to have it stretched beyond the time that we will need it, so we try to balance out the timeframe and the yield. It's the county's policy to provide training required by the Public Funds Investment Act and other periodic training and investments for the county's investment officer through courses and seminars offered by professional organizations and associations. An investment that requires a minimum rating under these statutes will be monitored by the investment officers with possible assistance of brokers and banking institutions. Again, I've mentioned what our strategies are. Bottom line is, we're safe under Barbara's guidance. We don't ever make any kind of an investment that is in the least bit speculative, and we always try to get the best return for our money, and we try to keep it all invested rather than just sitting idly in a bank account. So again, the major change this year is we've made that decision to consider the tax pool. Do we have any monies with tax pool yet?
No, sir.
Not yet, but we do have that door open should we decide to utilize. Barbara, is there anything you want to mention about our investment policy that we should know, that we might not know?
Well, there's not any change within the policy itself because it already had, it allowed us to join other pools, but we've never done that before in many years. I'm not sure how many, but in many years, we've not ever done that. But because Guaranty was only willing at this point to take $30 million, we had to make other arrangements, and that's why we asked you to do tax pool, so we would have an opportunity to put those funds somewhere else should that happen. And as Judge Lee mentioned, with the COVID money, the American Rescue Plan funds, and then, you know, when it's tax season and the tax office is getting that money, and now that turns over pretty quickly, but there could be days when we are over that $30 million limit. Last year when we did this, y'all authorized me to be the investment officer to make those transactions to you. We can have a committee. I would welcome any of you who have any questions. I'm happy to have a committee. I don't know that it's necessary at this time, but it's certainly up to you, and I'm willing to participate that if you want to. Further, you know, Guaranty Bank, our original contract with them, when I came to work, had a floor on the interest rates of .75% to .8%. The interest rate we're getting now is zero, good morning, is .01% to 3%, so it's significantly less than what we've gotten in the past. But that's the nature of an investment anywhere at this time. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention one more time. Interest rate is significantly lower.
Lowest we've ever seen, probably. That's good and bad. It enables us to refinance our bonds and save us a lot of money, so that's the good that comes of it, but when we have surplus funds, it's not so good. Any questions, comments, further clarification that you would like before we approve the investment policy? It is my recommendation that you do just that, that you do approve our investment policy, and if not, suggest an alternative.
Make a motion. We approve the investment policy.
Motion is made to approve our investment policy for the county.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, on a less grand scale, let's consider and possibly approve the quarterly investment report that Barbara provides for us once a quarter. You can see and look through there and see how much money is, how many different funds require investment, and this is no simple task. It doesn't just happen. It is carefully monitored by Barbara to keep that money working for us as much as we possibly can. If you have any questions there, you've got to, you can... If you have any questions there, you've got to, you can see there, you've got total FDIC and pledged securities, $24,660, that's what we had back at the end of March, and now here at the end of June, we've got $27,000, so you have, you see some, you know, it's gone up in the last three months, next quarter it may go back down. And so most of this is money market checking, certificates of deposit, but we do have Guaranty has, we've talked about this, has provided the proof that the monies we have with them are backed up by securities and other pledged assets, so that we know that the money we put with Guaranty Bank is protected in the event of a disaster.
Make motion, we approve the quarterly report.
Motion to approve this quarterly investment report.
Second?
Made by Commissioner Parker and seconded by Commissioner Parchman. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, these three scary guys that slipped in here a minute ago are here to discuss our road project, FM 1735, and I want to briefly mention that we have there, in item number 17, we have a, an executive session. So at some point here, we're going to go into executive session to discuss real estate matters in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 555.072. Here's what I'm going to recommend. We do have some possible items here that Gary is going to tell us about that may require our approval and my signature before they leave today, and then we have some items that are going to be discussed in that executive session. We will save the executive session until the very end, even after closing comments and after we take a quick break. I do not see any action coming out of that executive session, hence I did not put an action item after that. So if you want to stick around and see what happens after that, I'm afraid you're going to be disappointed, but nonetheless, we'll discuss item number 16, we'll jump over and handle our routine matters, items 18 through 21. We'll take a quick break, and then we'll gather back up in here for executive session without a subsequent action item. So, welcome, Gary and team, and regarding item number 16, I have this stated as a presentation of any various items by Gary Luba with H.W. Lochner regarding right-of-way acquisition on the FM 1735 Chapel Hill Road project with possible action. Do you have anything to take care of as part of that today?
Well, just like to have some counteroffers, just like to present to you for about, I think, five or six parcels, and maybe go over those, and just kind of get your feedback to go on my concur.
And those will be included, that'll be part of our executive session. Is there anything outside of executive session that we should take care of before we just go over those?
Um, no, I mean, if you want to, I brought Andy Petter here with me, that I, that they just had a short, free, you know, presentation on utility for me, some part.
Why don't we hear from them, just to, just to bring us all up to date on anything that doesn't have to be kept in executive session? Just kind of tell us how, how things are going on. We've got a fairly expensive project here, we know, at least for the county it is, when you're talking about $7 million buying right-of-way and paying for utilities to be relocated. Guys, if either one of you wants to have something to say, come on up here to the podium, and that way we get you on our recording, and folks at home that will later listen to this on our YouTube channel can hear your update.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Andy Petter. I work for Lochner, along with Gary, and I am our utility project manager. My background is, I worked 28, I had a 28-year career with TechDOT, handling very similar projects to what you're, you're doing on FM 1735. I retired back in 2015 out of the Waco District, and I work in our Waco office for Lochner. And I am working along with David Ivins in getting, working to get the utilities clear on this, on your FM 1735 project. Working with him, determining the best and quickest way to get utilities clear, seeing where we can avoid utility conflicts and hopefully save some money for the county, and also working through those reimbursable utility relocations that are going to arise. I know there's a few, at least a couple of utilities that look like are going to be reimbursable, and I'll turn it over to David in a little bit to talk.
Explain what you mean by reimbursable. Reimbursable by who?
That, they are, on a, on a, on a usual project, a usually done TechDOT project, it's, let me back up, utilities that are, that have a prior right to their property that they are on. Generally, this is the case when they have a current easement outside TechDOT right-of-way, and TechDOT's expanding the right-of-way and going to take in that, that utility, but now that utility is, is either going to be too close to the roadway, or going to be in the way of drainage structures or things like that, has to be relocated. That utility, again, being on their own easement outside TechDOT right-of-way, now with that requirement, and TechDOT says that's got to be relocated, their work is reimbursable. Sometimes that's 100%, sometimes they're, they're out on private easement of their own, and they veer into TechDOT right-of-way, and so it can end up being partially reimbursable to, usually based on that linear footage or number of power poles that is in public property and out on private property.
And the entity that does the reimbursement is TechDOT, and that money is paid to the utility company that's having to send out their crews to dig and move and whatever else they need to do?
Yes, and it is, it is my understanding that along with the county taking on the responsibility of, of paying for the right-of-way, you've also, the utility costs go along with that, that's part of the right-of-way cost, as TechDOT sees it, that the county will cover that utility cost also. So.
Give us an example of something that wouldn't be a reimbursable cost. In other words, where the utility company has to make a move, but it doesn't cost the county anything to do that?
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of that out there, more, more non-reimbursable than there will be reimbursable, at least by linear footage. I know out there on the project, there's a number of communication lines, and in one place there, early, toward the beginning of the project, the road's being realigned and the curve is being, being lengthened to make it a little safer. Right now, it's a fairly sharp curve. A lot of right-of-way is being purchased, but that communication line is, is inside TechDOT right-of-way.
Currently.
Currently. And TechDOT's buying more right-of-way and moving the roadway, and where that line is now, it's showing that the TechDOT roadway is going to go right over the top of it, and so it's got to be moved, but that communication line, that company that owns that line, is responsible for that, for that move of their own, because they were within public right-of-way currently. And so it's their responsibility to, to cover that cost. As y'all probably know, state, in Texas, the utilities have a right to be, a public utility has a right to be within TechDOT right-of-way, and so they do that often, but, but then it is, it is their cost completely when they do have to, have to move because of the TechDOT project, so, so that kind of gives you an example.
Okay. And so anything that is reimbursable, the bottom line is, it comes out of county funds?
Yes.
Because that's part of the deal we've made with TechDOT, is we will cover that cost for you because you're doing this road project for Titus County?
Yes, yes. And, and so to, let me think, we're just getting started really on the, on the utility coordination and talking with the utilities. In fact, we, we haven't made any, had any meetings or made any firsthand contact. There's been a few phone calls, and we might visit Water Company today, but, since we're in town. But, so many times, utilities, understandably, want to see some plan work, and so they can look and see where they are in conflict and where the roadway's going, how, again, where that drainage is going to be placed. And so we've got to let the TechDOT design catch up, so we have something to show the utilities, you know, where the roadway's going to be and those, those drainage appearances, where they're going to need to be, where those utilities are going to need to relocate. So we're still early in the process, but we're working on, we do, it is an aggressive project, we're trying to, we have a goal, or TechDOT has a goal of getting the utilities clear when the plans are complete by October of '22, which is pretty aggressive, really, practically a year from now, and so, but until we have 30% plans, which is approximately this kind of January, it's hard to, hard to have a lot of discussions with the utilities until they can see it on paper, what's, what's happening on the project. So, so it's, it's still early in the game, but I wanted to come and introduce myself. You might see my name on, on some paperwork as it comes through and as I help David with some of those, those engineering analysis of what's, what's in conflict. We'll be working with TechDOT, TechDOT designers, determining what's in conflict, what does have to be relocated, maybe, again, you know, buried lines that got to go deeper to get under a drainage outfall and those kind of things. But let me have David Ivins come up and tell you a little more about the process. He's, he also has a long career with TechDOT.
Thank you. Hi, David.
Good morning. Excuse me, good morning, gentlemen. If you recall, a few guys, four months ago, something like that, just kind of introduced myself and tell you generally what we were looking at, and I asked you a few questions at that time, that the answers to those questions predicated what we're doing here today. I wanted to bring Andy with you, with me, because Andy's my boss. If there's something I do that makes you mad, or the utility company mad, I want you to know who to go to, straighten me out. So that's what I need to do here, but I'm the one that's, I'm the boots-on-the-ground guy, I'm the one that's going to do most of this work. And just to go back and clarify a couple of things that Andy said, utilities on this project are going to be one of two kinds. One is located by permit, in other words, they're in existing TechDOT right-of-way, like Andy said, and they went to TechDOT and they got a permit to put their, their facilities within TechDOT right-of-way. Those guys are not going to be reimbursable. And quite frankly, I doubt, or seriously, you guys really care a whole lot about them, because I will work with them to make sure that the work that they're going to do clears the construction project that TechDOT's going to do. And I will work with TechDOT to make sure that they are in concurrence, that we have cleared this conflict, and help them get a permit through TechDOT to put it back into TechDOT right-of-way, and that's it. They don't get any money, they don't get anything else. They just, somebody has to work with them. So the only thing that that's really going to cost you, gentlemen, and the county, is my time, because I'm going to work with them to make sure they get this work done. The ones that will cost you some money are the ones that Andy referred to as reimbursable, and those are there on by easement. And since the last time we met, I have worked with Gary and reviewed all the title commitments, and it looks like to me that we have two that are going to be reimbursable, possibly three. Tri-utility, Tri-Special Utility District, it's changed names two or three times.
Tri-Water.
But it's the water company, okay? They look like they're going to be reimbursable. The other one is Booty Cast Electric, and I'm not sure exactly how reimbursable they're going to be, but I'm pretty sure they're going to have some reimbursability. Andy talked about some of them would be 100%, some of them would be partially reimbursable. Let me tell you how that works, and let's talk about the water companies. The water company's lateral lines, the ones that run along the roadway that are servicing the houses, those are all in private easement, okay? So those will be reimbursable. But occasionally, they have to cross from one side of the road to the other. Anytime they've crossed from one side of the road to the other, they got in TechDOT right-of-way to do that crossing, and that's not reimbursable. So typically, you're going to take the total linear footage of how much line they're moving, and the amount of it that's in TechDOT right-of-way is considered non-reimbursable, the amount that's in TechDOT right-of-way is considered reimbursable. You do a calculation to figure a ratio or a percentage, and then once they send us a bill, if they send us a bill for $10 and they've got a 90% reimbursability, you're going to pay 90, $9 of it, the other $10, I mean, the other dollar, I don't know, everybody. It's actually fairly simple, but those are the ones that I will be in communication with you on, on a fairly regular basis, before we ever get to the point of signing a piece of paper with them. And we have brought, last time I talked to you guys about whether you had your own forms, I didn't feel like you did, but I wanted to make sure. You told me you did. So what I did was I took TechDOT's forms, and I changed them where they needed to be changed to say Titus County instead of State of Texas. Now, there are still some references in there to the State of Texas, because whatever they put back in is still going to have to meet the State of Texas guidelines, and also, this is a State of Texas road, it is a State of Texas road project. So there are still some references to the State of Texas and TechDOT in these forms, but by and large, these forms are now between Titus County and the utility, okay? There's several of these forms that nobody with the county has to sign. Just as an example, they're going to have to tell us how they're going to do this work. You mentioned a while ago, Judge, about them sending their crews out there to do this work. Chances are real good, most of them are not going to do that, they're going to contract it, okay? Well, there's a form that they have to fill out to tell us, are we going to contract it, are we going to take it to bid, are we going to do the work ourselves, so on and so forth. Y'all will have to sign that, but I still wanted you to see these forms. So I've brought three packets of these forms, we can provide more if we need to, but I want to leave those with you, because A, you may want your attorney to look at them, okay? Because, Judge, you're going to have to sign the basic agreement. The basic agreement is called a U35 standard utility agreement, and it's going to outline what work's going to be done, how it's going to cost, and how much you're going to be responsible for. And you're going to have to sign. So I feel like somebody's going to want to review it, whether you want your county attorney to review it, you want to review it personally, whatever. So I brought those with me. The other thing that I brought with me, and I brought one of these for each of you, is an SOP, okay? The SOP really doesn't require any action or anything other than, I want you to know how this process is going to work, especially you, sir, because it's in your, your precinct, and you may have some questions along the way from some of these utility companies. I don't know if you will or not, but if they do, I don't want you to be caught off by surprise. So I've brought an SOP for all of you. Obviously, take a look at the SOP, if they're sitting there you don't like, let me know. You know, it's, remember, this is written in stone, I just wanted y'all to have an idea of how this process was going to work. The other thing I brought with me was from a good friend here, who is going to be the one that's in charge of paying for bills, and I brought you the package that I told you I was going to give you an example of how you were going, how you would see bills, because I want her to be satisfied before I ask for money, that we have done our due diligence. And just, what that's all about is, we want to make sure that the utility company is only billing us for work on this job. Utility companies are not notorious about trying to slip work in from other jobs, but it's still my job to make sure that that's all they did, okay? If, if they're sending us a bill, we want to make sure it's because of this job, not because of something around the corner. And that's, that's what my package will, will do for you, and obviously, I'll be willing to go over any of this here if we need to. I thought you had to be after this was over. Andy told you that generally what our schedule was, and if this is an aggressive schedule, there, there, we're going to have to hustle to make this work, because the 30% plans are not due till January, and utility companies won't really even start talking to me until I have 30%, and they're not going to start doing a whole lot of planning until they have 60%. 60% is not due until April, okay? And then they, they want us moved and cleared by October 1st, okay? Well, let's go back to that. Well, let's go back to that Water Company. That Water Company's basically going to have to move all their lines and all their meters from one end of this project to the other. Maybe not a whole lot up on 49, but on 1735 itself. And that's a pretty significant move for a relatively small company. It's one of the reasons, I've already talked to the man on the phone two or three times, but again, while we're here, Andy and I are going to stop by and see him and shake his hand so that he can put a name to a face and so if I make him mad, he knows how to get in touch with it. But we are going to try to get him started because his is probably going to be the most extensive move out here and he's not used to doing this. People's Telephone, Sudden Communications, CenterPoint Energy, Sweat Co., these are all people that are out there, but they're used to doing this. They do this all the time. And so, yes, I have to be their biggest burden by keeping on and staying on top of and contacting them to make sure they get it done, but they don't know what to do. Try to get the Special Utility, probably, this may be the only time he's ever done it, but if it's not, he certainly doesn't do it regularly. So I'm going to help him if I have to. So that's kind of where we are. I just wanted to come back and, like I said, bring you those forms because I told you a couple of minutes ago I would, bring you that SOP and I'll leave those with you. And obviously, I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have. I believe, Judge, that last time I gave you my contact information, I know I gave the county auditor my contact information. I believe I shared my contact information with you and obviously, any of the other commissioners that want my information, I'll be more than happy to do it. I am one of those people that is still working from home. So call my cell number. I raise three daughters and so I answer my cell phone anytime it rings because you never know when somebody's in trouble. So I'll answer my phone anytime. For your perspective, really, the fact that I'm working from home's a pretty good thing because I live in Red County, about halfway between Glagone or Kilgore. So I'm just a hop and skip and a jump for you guys. It can be up here, it took me about 45 minutes to get here, so I can be up here anytime I need to, to meet with somebody or answering questions. So with that, my wife and daughter have a volunteer that I talk too much, so I'll shut up and I will answer the questions that you have and then I will provide these forms to you before we leave. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, it sounds like if the 30% plans aren't even due for a while, you know, we don't have a whole lot to discuss. And all I would ask for you to do is that if something were to come along and that all of a sudden, we have new information that is favorable, less favorable to the county, just give us some heads-up warnings so we can stop worrying about it sooner than later.
Okay, I promise to do that. The other thing that's in my SOP that I probably should have mentioned, but I do want to mention here, we put together with the Department of Insurance to make drinks. Okay? This outlines all the different adjustments that are going to need to be made, or at least the ones that we want to investigate. I've already started working on that. And once I have that in place, I will let you know. I will provide you a copy of it. But then also, I will keep that updated on probably at least a monthly basis. So this is the contact I've made with the utility, this is the schedule that I gave me, this is where we think we are, so on and so forth. It's just basically a status report, shall we say. And I will provide those to you on a monthly basis. Now, a lot of them you're going to look at and say, okay, fine, Andy, you're getting clicked and go to your dead file or get clicked and go to your trash can. And I get that, but you will at least have seen it. And I'm not going to do, I'm not going to give you any surprises. As I know things, you will know things. And when we have, one of the first things that, back to the Water Company, one of the first things that they're going to have to provide to us before we can even start putting together an agreement, is a detailed set of plans of what work they're going to do and a detailed cost estimate. And I will present that cost estimate to you before, I don't want the first time that you see it being when I send it to you and say, you need to sign this.
Yeah.
Okay? I will present that to you so that you will have an idea of where you're at. Before we ever get to that point, I will calculate what your percentage is going to be and I'll provide that for you as well. And me and the gentleman with the Water Company will agree to that reimbursement percentage so that he, in other words, I don't want him to think he's getting ripped off. Okay? I will sit down and show him, this is how I calculated it. Do you agree with this or do you see something else that I need to look at differently? So because that's one of the areas of contention, so to speak, is what that reimbursement eligibility will be. And him and I will sit down and work that out. It's not going to be a surprise to him anymore than it's a surprise to you, obviously, too, that you guys have that information.
Pretty good.
Anything else? No? Okay, I appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary, anything else before we end this?
No, sir.
Well, since there is not any specific action there that we want to take, I would suggest maybe to wrap up item number 16, just acknowledge that we've heard reports from various Lochner personnel regarding the right-of-way utility relocation process. Maybe we just approve that and that's the only item.
Make that in a motion to approve that?
Sure.
If we approve the process-
We just acknowledge that-
Various items?
Acknowledge that there was a report given by Lochner-
All right.
-for regarding utility relocation made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Because we're going to leave executive session number 17 to the end, we'll move on to an item number 18, approval of oral and written reports.
Make a motion to approve.
And that motion for approval is made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You have Cheryl's treasurer's report there before you.
Make that motion.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
I'll second.
And second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Let me take this break here to get you to sign these various documents. Here is the treasurer's. Here is the investment policy. See if there's other documents in there to sign related to the, well, we have two additional things. We had the weekly report, we had the investment report, we had the investment policy. Then I'll get to budget amendments, but I want y'all to all be able to listen to that. Okay, I've got, did we approve treasurer's report?
Yes.
Item number 20 for your approval. We have three budget amendments. We're getting here close to the end of the year, so we're starting to do some cleanup and adjustments within accounts and we'll continue to do that even after the end of the fiscal year. We have items 56, 57, 58. The first one, item 56, you'll recall at the last meeting, we approved some overlapping custodial payroll expenses so that Elijah could be trained by David and that amounts to a total of $671. That breaks down as salary, Social Security, Medicare, retirement, grand total of $671 for that last week. This will, because there's no money in that budget for such, this is, only happens when we have somebody departing, that comes out of our contingency account, $671. Item number 57, this impacts precincts 2, 3, and 4. In precinct 2, we are moving some money out of road oil and putting it into other road materials to the tune of $15,000. In precinct 4, we're taking $3,000 out of road oil and putting it into gas and oil. And then in precinct 3, we are allocating $20,000 of additional road materials and $5,000 out of, for culverts, a total of $25,000 and that will come out of his carryover fund balance there in precinct 3. Moving on to the final agenda item, this is the county agents department and we are taking $1,714 out of their auto allowance and putting it into travel and seminars. And we're taking $1,222 out of repair and maintenance and putting it into supplies. The supplies to allocate funds for the purchase of a camera system in the large meeting room of the extension office that was identified at the AgriLife meeting back in August. So there are three adjustments there. Custodial salary, road-related expenses adjustments, and then lastly, minor adjustments within the county agents department. Any questions or discussion on those?
Make a motion, we approve them.
Motion to approve these three budget amendments made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 21, signed pay orders, approved payment of our current set of bills.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closing comments. Today, I don't have any closing comments. I'll start with Commissioner Precinct 4.
I don't have anything.
Precinct 3.
I still want to say that I appreciate everybody, precinct 1, 2, and 4 for helping us to chip seal and appreciate everything you've done.
Teamwork helps, doesn't it? Commissioner 2.
I want to thank everybody who helped us chip seal in 2 and all the departments. It worked out real good. Sure looked nice.
Commissioner 1.
I'd like to thank everyone as well. A lot of hard work was done and really looked nice, turned out great. Thank you all.
Okay, it is about 10:45 and we are going to take a recess here for about seven minutes if you need to take care of anything quick. And when we reconvene, we will be in executive session. So it'll be the Lochner team and the commissioners' court. And again, there will be no action coming out of that meeting, so if you want to stick around and shake hands, fine, but you'll need to do so out in the hallway. Okay? All right. Let's go ahead and, no, we'll adjourn after the executive session. Okay, we are back in regular session. We've just completed an executive session at 12:04 PM and we have one single item left and that is to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn. Applewhite, second. Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, ladies.